All right, I'd like to open up the committee the whole to go into closed session. Is, oh, is there a motion to go into closed session? And please read the motion.
I move that the village board adjourn into closed session pursuant to 19.851E to discuss negotiating strategy for the police union agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Oh, we'll all vote aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee McGovern.
Aye.
President McCaig.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero.
And I guess we should note for the record that trustee Stokebrand, trustee Kudo, and trustee Ursink are excused. Good evening. We are about to go into closed session. And we will be back out again and convene the business meeting of the village board at 7:30. Get started. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:30 PM. All trustees are present except for trustee Stokebrand, who has been excused. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and thank you for your time, talent, and patience in advance as we conduct business this evening. We have one special order of business. Well, and also, we have a special guest in the audience, our newly elected state senator, Dora Drake. So, thank you for coming to join us. And special order of business. We have one item this evening to consider Shorewood Business Improvement District 2025 Operating Plan and request for North Oakland Avenue Construction and Signage. This came to us.
I think that's. You're in the last meeting agenda.
You know what? It did sound familiar. Yeah.
We do a little bit of the same thing at this meeting, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's just pause here while the president finds her correct.
Remember what she did with me grief, caring about the beginning?
Yeah, right? Proclamation. There you go. We do have one special order of business this evening, and our newly elected senator is still here, so that was all accurate. But our special order of business is a proclamation recognizing the, our election inspectors. Not to put you on the spot, but trustee Kudo, would you like to read this?
No, thank you.
Okay. I will, I will read it. Recognizing our election inspectors, whereas 133 election inspectors have been approved by the village board for the 2024-2025 election cycle, and whereas a total of 97 election inspectors assisted with various tasks before and during the general election, absentee ballot mailing, 12, as special voting deputies for River Park Apartments, 6, and Harbor Chase Care Facility, 2, during in-person absentee voting, 11, and on Election Day at Central Count, 23, at the Village Center for Wards 1 through 4, 22, at Shorewood High School for Wards 5 through 8, 22, and at North Shore Presbyterian Church for Wards 9 to 11, 9 to 12, 11. And whereas the continual communication the co-chief inspectors had with Clerk Harrell addressing concerns or questions in the months, weeks, and days prior to the general election resulted in their extraordinary leadership, now therefore be it resolved that the village recognizes co-chiefs Michael Brazelli, Mary Corbella, Catherine Flaherty, Janet Cryline, Kathy Lethrop, James Lethrop, Jean Sackin, and Kayla Schaefer for their exemplary leadership and supervision of our outstanding 97 election inspectors during the general election, who are truly the superheroes of Shorewood, dated at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this 18th day of November, 2024. All right, thank you. That concludes our special order of business this evening. Oh, yeah, we could take a picture. Would everybody like to come and join us? Or we'll? Okay.
So, anyone that feels so inclined.
Oh, my goodness, look at them try to hide. No big deal. Happens often.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank.
Thanks for thinking of that, Chris.
Oh, good.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll continue on with the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted as presented. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we will continue on to public hearings. We have one this evening regarding the proposed 2025 budget. For that, I'm going to call up the finance director. And you can, I think you have a presentation for us. And then I'll open the public hearing. We'll take public comments at the podium, and then we'll close the public hearing. And under new business, we will consider the budget before us.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see such a turnout for another quarter turn of a century budget here for the village of Shorewood for our 2025 budget. We've had lots of detail leading up to this.
I'm so sorry, but we can't hear you. You're, I know it's hard because you're going to have to look there and speak right into the microphone.
You can look.
How's that?
Yeah. Lot better.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you. It's wonderful to see such a turnout for another quarter of the century budget hearing for the village of Shorewood. It's a pleasure to be here with you. As you've seen in the past few months, we've definitely given you a lot of detailed information about the budget, so I don't expect to have a one-hour presentation here. It will be relatively summarized. But you do have the detailed information in the board packet for the budget. I also prepared a narrative summarizing the budget as well that you could reference if you're, if you don't like the PowerPoint as it is presented. We might have moved away, so why don't we go ahead and? Yeah, go ahead. So, as an overall budget for the village, we want to remind you that the village, as a part of your property taxes, is about 25% of the total levy overall. And that levy is made up of various other tax levy components. That levy is made up of various other tax levy components from other taxing jurisdictions, including the school districts, the county, MMSD, and MATC. MMSD is the Metropolitan Sewerage District, and then MATC is the Technical College. 25%, including the TIDS, is the portion that the village receives for resources to pay for operations and for capital that we've set aside that will be financed with the tax levy. And that's 25% of the total that's coming to the village. Proceed to the next slide, please. As an overall view of the budget over the past 10-year period or the past decade, you can see that overall the tax levy has remained relatively stable. And as you know, this year, we have increased the levy for the 2025 year to show more of a larger increase than we have seen. So, this shows you that the budget over the past 10-year period has really been more of a flat line and really not increased significantly and kept stable over time. And as a result, we've got some additional expenses and projects to pay for now. So, we can look at the next slide and see where we end up for the levy. So, the overall levy ends up at an average for the whole village as a whole of 6.77%. The reason why it's more than the 6% is because of the debt service levy piece that makes up 31, almost 32% of the overall tax levy of the village. As you know, there's a long-range plan that the village has prepared that shows our expenditures out into the next several years. And that is where the debt service has come from, from that planning process. We do levy for the full amount of debt service, and then what's remaining is going to pay for operations. And that is what the 6% increase is for. The debt service, because it's so large, ends up making the average a little bit higher for a 6.77% increase if you average it all together. And actually, another component of this is the library requesting a smaller than 6% increase as well. The overall levy, then, as a summary, for what a homeowner would pay for a $340,000 home would be an extra $175 versus what that homeowner paid in the previous year for the budget. Next slide, please. As a component of your overall revenues for the village, the property taxes, as you can see, make up 69% of those revenues. This is based on the revenue composition that was collected during or that was planned for during the 2024 budget period. And then for 2025, as using that as a guide, and what we decided was the levy of the taxes to be a total of 9.126, which is 63% of the general fund revenues. So, as you can see, that compares to about this, a similar percentage for what we used to finance the 2024 budget, which was 65%. So, there is a slight increase. However, we did have some increases in other revenue sources. So, our property tax revenue piece only makes up 63% of the puzzle there currently. Next slide, please. And then, of course, the second part of the budget is how we divide up those revenues into the expenditure categories. The overall expenditures planned for the general fund, which is the main fund of the village, is 14.4 million versus the expenditures planned for the 2024 budget, which were 13.2 million. So, you can see that increase. It's predominantly related to the two items that we are showing as separate for the vehicle registration fees and the streetlight charge. And then the remainder are increases in the budget related to 4% increase in expenditures related to the cost of living averaged out over the past few years, as well as increases to various other expenditures, including salary and related expenses such as health, et cetera. Next slide, please. So, besides the general fund, the village also finances other funds. And as I mentioned previously, the library fund did request a smaller tax levy increase of 2.1%, which did bring the overall amount down for the average of 6.77%. The overall operating budget of the library increased 2.7%. And then the overall operating budget is 1.1 million, of which 88% is funded by property tax revenue. And then we also have the senior center and the Shorewood Today Fund, and those have very minor expenditures that we've budgeted, mostly funded by property taxes. For the Senior Resource Center Fund, the remainder is funded by some grants. And then the Shorewood Today Fund is mainly funded by advertising fees, the remainder with just general fund expenditures. Next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned previously, the debt service fund is really the culprit for our biggest increase in our property tax levy. And this comes from debt service that the village has already decided to issue, and we need to levy for the principal and interest. So, for the 2025 budget, the final expenditures of principal and interest are 4.2 million. Of that total amount, about 1 million is supported by your tax increment districts. And the property tax levy overall for debt is going to be $2.5 million, which is actually $4.2 million, which is an 11.9% increase from the $2.5 million. I think there's a clerical error on that slide because the expenditures that we're levying for will be $2.5 million, but the total expenditures in the debt service fund are $4.2 million. The disconnect is because of your maximum levy that you can have for your property taxes. So, oftentimes, this concept is a little bit confusing for folks to understand. You're always going to pay your debt service, right? So, we levy for your full debt service, but the amount that's included in the levy itself is a little bit lower because there's only a maximum amount that we can levy under the statutes. And the way that we bring that down is with the debt service amount. So, I think including that amount is a little bit confusing on this slide, which is why I wanted to point it out in that way. Next slide. The Capital Projects Fund is where we finance equipment and other capital expenditures for the village that is not financed by debt service that's paid over a future many years. So, these are financed predominantly by property tax levies or funds that are already in this fund set aside from previous years. The projects that we have planned for 2025 are summarized there. And then from previous years, we do have some projects that were planned for which we haven't received the equipment, and that is presented as carryover funding here. Next slide. So, that concludes the villages' funds that are financed predominantly by property taxes. The enterprise funds are then the funds of the village that are financed by either fees or charges or some other direct item. Parking utility is financed by the parking fines. The budget overall is about 3% increase, and the revenues are just based on the estimates of the permit sales. The water utility fund will be adjusted based on the Public Service Commission rate case that is currently in effect, but what is currently in the budget is presented there for you. The sewer utility fund is budgeted as at 3.3, 3.1 million in operating expenses at a 12% increase. And revenues are based on sales with an increase in the rate of 8% planned for the 2025 budget. The fees for MMSD then account for 30% of the total expenditures that we pass on to the ratepayers there. Next slide, please. So, that would conclude the enterprise funds, and that is the overall budget for the village. You know, the big takeaways are, again, the debt service fund is a big part of it because of that that we already have for previous projects. And some of the additional items that we are working towards, such as the streetlight fee, as well as the other utility charge, I'm sorry, not utility charge, but the transportation vehicle registration fee, those are going to be worked on through the 2026 fiscal year for us to pass resolutions, fill out the required paperwork, and make sure that everything is done properly with the Department of Revenue. So, all of those are just efforts that we need to continue once the budget is approved. But this is the full, complete budget before you that the board has advised us on currently. And we're very excited to present it to you. And everyone worked together in a way that I have not seen in local government in the past. The departments all came together and worked in a really collaborative way. So, I'm really proud to be part of this team, and thank you for so many people showing up from the community all this time, not just for this hearing, but all of the previous ones that we had thus far. Thank you so much for your time and your.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing at. The time is 7:50. At this time, I invite members of the public to come to the podium, say your name and address, and share your comments. We typically ask for a three-minute comment period per person, but. Oh, there is a hand on online. Is this Larmen?
Thank you. I'm Linda Larmen. I live at 1811 East Elmdale Court. I will try and be brief. I also may look down a bit because I have some talking points written out, and that will help me be brief. Thank you for this opportunity. As you all know, on the board and the village officials, I've been following the budget issues somewhat closely this year, and especially the proposed streetlight fees. And to give that some context, when I first heard about the flat per property owner charge sought to be imposed, my reaction, and I think that of others in the community, was that those charges would be regressive and thus somewhat unfair. And then my next reaction was to go down a legal rabbit hole to see whether, in light of the regressivity, whether those charges could in fact pass muster. I sent you on the board and Rebecca and Chris this morning an email after I found and reviewed Attorney Bayer's legal memorandum. And I'm not going to go through what my, what his email says or what I, mine says. But the good news is that, after looking what he had to say, that I'm in substantial agreement with him on the legal issues. But the big surprise to me was learning that he said he had been informed that the charges proposed to be imposed on us would be for routine operations and maintenance. And my understanding from all prior materials on those charges was that they would be for the cost of the new streetlights, infrastructure, and payable over a 25-year period, the length of the bond. Now, I did see that on tonight's agenda in new business, there's an item about and some kind of additional information in the streetlighting charge. So, I am trusting that you will clarify all of this. I also want to make two other comments regarding the streetlights. One is putting aside all the legal mumbo jumbo, although it's very important mumbo jumbo. I think the reaction of some of us in the general public who are being asked to pay this is, and I realize this is a common reaction to, to special fees, but, you know, why do we have to pay new fees for something as basic as having our blocks properly lit? I spoke with a good friend today who's lived in the same house in the village for 37 years. She's a smart and very engaged person, but I will say she's pretty outraged about the, this concept of special, of a special fee for this. The other comment I want to make about the streetlights is if, in fact, there's been a change, factual change, so that what we will be asked to pay for is routine operations and maintenance rather than the cost of funding new lights, I hope there won't be funny math. And that, because under the idea of paying for the capital improvements, as has been said, the idea was to raise $700,000 next year, and that would be raised by a charge on all property owners, all residential property owners of $153, and on commercial properties of a multiple of that depending on their size. So, I would note that under the Milwaukee, Milwaukee Plan enacted in 2021, where they measure residential charges for routine operations and maintenance according to linear feet of the property, the Milwaukee has stated that the average charge per property owner is about $40 a year. So, I urge you to look at all of this very closely. Another theme that I would like to raise about the revenue side of the budget is what you've heard from other people as well, which is, where's the, where's the belt tightening? I would urge you, if not this year, well, I would urge you in 2025, to carefully look at, at budget cutting, both big and small. I think that's a way to sell these big increases, and it's just something that, that needs to be done. Along those lines, I'm going to speak for my demographic, that being the senior community. There really are a lot of us here on fixed incomes. And as our costs go up and up and up, we have no possible raises or new jobs to pay for it, to pay for those increases. So, we have to do cost-cutting in our personal budgets elsewhere. And I think there's, there's always a lot of talk these days in Shorewood about affordable housing, and that's a good thing. But you have to consider that while we may have been at one time very able to buy and afford our homes, a lot of us are getting sort of priced out, and I hope you'll consider that. There's one item I'd really like to have explained tonight at some point, which is in the, on the revenue side of the budget called charges for services that's supposed to go up in 2025 by 291.8% from approximately $318,000 to about 2, $1,245,000. Maybe I've just overlooked things, but I'm unclear as to what those charges are. And given the dramatic increase, would like more information on that. Last, I request that you stay as informed and, I would say, nimble as possible when it comes to the budget and reevaluate items as necessary. A primary example of that is the lead pipes project. Several national and state commentators, writers, that I've read pieces by have said that the Trump administration will likely change the EPA rules that were issued this summer, and that require replacement within 10 years to extend that period to something beyond 10 years. Of course, it's imperative that public health issues be considered when it comes to lead pipes. But without getting political about this at all, so should taxpayer of interest. If there's an opportunity to drag out the period and give we property owners who are being asked to carry a big burden, a break. Thanks very much. Um, thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Larmen. I know that you were um, representing uh, more than just yourself, so we did extend the comment period. So thank you. All right, are there other members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter?
Jay Sorenson, 1916 East Kensington Boulevard. Oh yeah, I always do this.
Everybody does.
Jay Sorenson, 1916 East Kensington Boulevard. Can I begin by asking a question? I'm curious why, first off, I support these expenditures. Uh, we live in a village that's aged and obviously we need to uh, make investments in the physical plant of the village. My question though is about the method. Um, why are these being, you, why the, why the, why are these being assessed as user fees? I have a suspicion why, but I, I, why is that? Is there a reason? As opposed to having them being applied to uh, general uh, village expenditures and, and property tax?
Tax levy?
Yes.
So would you, you wanted to summarize what the board, how the board got to this point? Christina?
Yep.
I mean, I can say high level, the board was given options on how to uh, fill the deficit. Um, and it was more palatable to the board to split and go with more of a 6% tax levy increase versus, and make it a combination, so.
I, 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 I suspected that and my, my, my issue with that is Congress, the US Congress seems inclined to raise the amount of deductions uh, in the coming fiscal years that property owners can take. Um, you know, the, the, the uh, property tax-heavy states are finally being heard. And so every time that there is something taken off the ledger from the property tax bill and placed into my credit card bill, um, it's no longer deductible. And it has a true economic penalty because when it's deductible, it reduces the cost to me by about 30%. And so I suspect why this is attractive is that you don't want to be seen as raising the property tax levy because it would be politically unpopular and probably it, it just would be polit- politically unpopular. And I urge you to take a fiscal approach to this in terms of recognizing that your customers, the residents, the villages. I work in the airline business, trust me. People do not like paying fees that are not optional. And what you have proposed here, you know, I think probably the rest of the village fee structure is optional. In that um, you can elect if you want to buy village services. This is not optional. And so I think that you're gonna have pushback on that issue. But also, I mean, just the, the fiscal sensibility of having me pay for things with my credit card as opposed to the benefit, hey, um, we are in a high-tax state and anything that you can deduct is very, very attractive. It's a 30% nut for most people. And when you add up the annual expense here, it's a meaningful chunk of change that can be easily avoided if you guys are willing to take a bit more heat in exchange for those savings. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Sorenson. Yes, we do operate by majority. Other members of the public who would like to be heard? I'm not seeing any other hands, but I don't know if I can see everyone who's online. Okay, hearing done, we will close the, the uh, public hearing at 8:04. Moving on to item nine, citizens to be heard. This is from, uh, this is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on a matter not on the agenda this evening? All right, I'm not seeing anyone online or in the audience. Moving on to new business. 10A, consider resolution 2024-16, a resolution adopting the 2025 budget and authorizing the 2024 general property tax levy against all taxable property in the Village of Shorewood. This is the business item with which we, in which we um, consider and discuss uh, the um, tax levy, but the budget that was presented during the public hearing. So with that, I would open it up to the trustees for discussion.
Happy to kick it off.
Thank you.
Um, so you know, obviously we've been working on this for a long time. Um, and I think we've done a really good job of breaking everything down that we could to see basically what's the best possible option or the best possible combination of options um, that we can utilize uh, just to make sure that the village stays operating the way that it's operating um, without major changes. Um, and for me personally going into this, you know, one of my goals was just to keep Shorewood the way it is. I did not want to see major changes to anything um, in any direction, losing things, new construction, any of that. Um, so for me, I wanted to look at a way that we could fix the budget, have the money that we need, retain the services that we need and be in a position where we're secure for the future. Um, you know, my wife's family has owned a home here for the last 70 years. Um, and my wife and I have been here for over 10 and we plan to live here, hopefully 70 more. And we, we like Shorewood the way that it is. So um, you know, I think there was a lot of good discussion that we had here on the board and on the Budget and Finance Committee, which I'm a member of. And there's just a couple concerns that I, I would just like to address a little bit. Um, you know, just to be clear, there's, there's no extra money, there's no extra employees. There's no silver bullet that if we cut this one thing, we'll have more money. Uh, the problem is that we don't have a lot of taxpayers to ask money or from. And so when we need to buy something, we all have to chip in on that. You know, with the levy versus the fees, you know, that was, I shared the exact same concern right from the beginning. Um, I was okay with going up to an 8% uh, levy increase to keep all of the money in that one tax deductible bucket. There were other board members who would rather keep it at 2%, which was not enough to fund what we need to fund. Um, not even close. With the, and the other side of that problem is that there's a limit. The state legislature sets a limit on what we can levy and unless the state legislature can change, that's, that's what we're stuck at. With the streetlights in particular, you know, this is a major problem. We've been receiving concerns from uh, community members about the streetlights being out for a long time. And when we did a study into it, we realized that there were a lot of problems with how those were originally installed. I believe it was close to 50 years ago. Including exposed wire underground. This has to be fixed as soon as possible. And you know, to, to use the fee in this case is a way for us to just get the money that needs to be here and it can fall off the books once it's done. So that was, it's painful option, but the streetlights have to be fixed. Um, you know, with regards to things like the lead pipes, you know, it's, it, it's really important that we fix this. Shorewood actually has been, was far ahead of the Biden administration on our plans to replace the lead pipes. Um, they came in later and made us accelerate our, our already relatively accelerated plan. Even if that changes, even if that plan changes, the, the basic plan that we have is really sound. It, it's, it's a really good plan for replacing these lead pipes. And I, I for one will not accept an option that keeps lead pipes in this village for any longer. Um, you know, we have children and babies and breastfeeding mothers who are drinking that water and we have to protect them from lead poisoning. And so I, I, I just, we have to proceed with that plan to get that done as quickly as possible. So for me overall, again, I, I'm okay with the budget as it is. I think there was a lot of discussion about it, a lot of compromise that got us to the point that we're at. You know, and I, I think given all of the factors, this is the best that we could put together at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Lynn. Want to go around?
I, oh, we go over this way?
We'll go this way.
Yeah, I would echo a lot of what Jerry said, especially when it comes to fixing the lead drinking water issue. That's, that's something that we gotta take care of and I think overall, we're very close to being done. There's a couple of things that I would like to see changed before we make a final vote. Um, we've been talking a lot about these big-ticket items, things like the wheel tax, which I voted for. I think out of necessity for fixing our roads, making sure we have good transportation, I'm ready to vote for the lighting fee as much as I would prefer it to be in the levy. You know, we had some of the same discussions, uh, bringing up the same issues you mentioned. It's we just need that. It's for the safety of our DPW employees. It's for the safety of the public having functioning streetlights that aren't out for weeks at a time. So I'm ready to support that fee as much as I don't really want to do it. Um, I would add that it's gonna save us about 37, 30,000 a year in electricity for the lifetime of the project. So that's, that's not nothing. My, my concern is that you know, throughout this whole two-month process, we've been sort of presenting the options to the public of we're looking at either 2, 4, 6, or 8% levy increase and now we see that's really closer to 7%. And you know, at the last meeting I said, I'm comfortable or kind of like the least bad option is to go ahead and do the 6% for all these things that we just need, even though I don't really like the idea of raising taxes that much. I pay the taxes here, but these are all things that we need for the good of the community. Um, but I would like to see a way to stay at 6% and not the 6.77, which is, you know, rounded up to 7. So if that means using some of that parking utility fund, there's a surplus there of around, I think it's $475,000. I know generally it's not a good idea to fix a hole in your budget with a one-time expense, but we're not really doing that. We're talking about you know, pretty substantial revenue increases, both in the levy and new fees that we've never had before. So I feel like we're not being, you know, we're not being irresponsible in, uh, we're not just kicking the can down the road. Some of these things that we're gonna be raising fees and taxes for, things that we've needed for many years in Shorewood. So I feel like we're, we're being responsible and I think it would be all right for us to use some of that uh, surplus parking, uh, parking utility funding to try to bring that um, property tax levy increase down. So whether that means putting it off for another two weeks, um, if that's necessary or if it's something we can fix tonight, um, I'm all, I'm all ears on that. I think we're, we are really close, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting and, and I'm looking forward to voting yes on a budget that's very close to this. And I will add one thing, one final thing, and then I'll pass it on to Arthur. You know, we're, we're stuck arguing over these priorities that are really important, like keeping lead out of the drinking water, fixing our roads, fixing our streetlights that go out for weeks at a time. And we have to make some hard choices. These choices would be a lot easier if we had more taxpayers living here. If we had another 2,000 taxpayers living in the village, we could spread out that tax burden. We're gonna have the same amount of streetlights, the same roads, same water mains if we had more people living here to share that tax burden. And you know, we were talking about a, an apartment building with 54 homes for Shorewood families in this, in the parking lot here that would also paid 80,000 a year in property taxes for decades and decades to come. So every time we put off and you know, fail to take action on housing, whether it's market rate or affordable housing, there's a price to pay and we're gonna be paying that uh, starting tonight with, with big um, levy and fee increases. So is my hope that going forward, you know, next year, we're gonna be looking at uh, some options that might make it easier to build housing here, um, both affordable and market rate housing. And it's my hope that this board and this community will show some leadership in making some progress on providing new homes in Shorewood.
Thank you, trustee McCovern.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to the residents here in Shorewood. Um, it has been an incredibly engaging conversation. We are on sort of the cusp of uh, generational changes here in, in the community. And um, since my time on the board for the past five years and, and previously just paying attention to the village, I, I have to say that I am just so excited uh, about what we're doing here, the changes that we're making. We are making generational changes in this community, changes that we haven't seen for the past, you know, 70, 50, 100 years. And uh, I have to say that we're all residents here. None of us, none of us are excited to, you know, pay higher taxes, pay the fees. Um, but I have to say that, that, you know, the can has been kicked down the road far too long in this community and the residents here deserve better and, and that's what we're bringing. We're trying to, we're trying to get Shorewood up to the place that it needs to be. We have failing streetlights. We have a DPW that is, you know, could be condemned in the next couple of weeks. Um, you know, so many things are failing here because we haven't made the initiative to want, we haven't raised taxes for the past, you know, 10, 20 years. So we as a board have made that very difficult, unpopular decision to raise the taxes to 6%. Um, I, I was also in, in favor of, of no fees and, and wrap it all into um, a tax increase, but uh, 8% is, is a, is a much more difficult pill to swallow than 6%. So I think there's a lot of compromise there. I also want to um, you know, show my, you know, utmost appreciation to our finance team and the village manager and the assistant manager for really putting this together. This is an incredible, incredible um, amount of work that everybody did collaboratively and um, to the utmost sort of respect for every resident in this community. I think when we go into these decisions, we think about you. We think about everybody in this, in this community. We think about our employees. We think about our residents. It's, it's mo, it's, it's how we fall asleep at night is thinking about everybody in this room. So this notion that we're not considering the public, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not doing what we need to be doing is just such, is just false because you know, it's something that we think about daily and nightly. Um, I fall asleep dreaming about the DPW. So um, you know, that, that's kind of weird. But um, you know, but, but I, I, I just want to say, I just appreciate so much the employees and the, the folks that put this budget together as well as this board. Um, again, I've been on the board now for, going on six years and i- it's been contentious. It's, there's been a lot of, you know, drama. There's been, you know, arguing. There's been bickering. Um, this was a board that got down to work, uh, that was collaborative and that put this thing together. And, and you know, uh, we did have differing opinions, but we did it civilly and we put together the best possible package to move this village into, you know, this next sort of phase of, of Shorewood. Um, and we're really just talking about bringing streetlights up to code, a DPW that, that is a more modernized than what it was built 100 years ago for. And um, you know, quite a few other things with replacing streets and, and a lot of infrastructure. So infrastructure is not, is not a glamorous thing by any means, but it is completely necessary and um, you know, just, I've never felt so proud to drive down a street than when Downer was finally opened up. You know, I, I probably rode up and down that thing three or four times, you know. But um, you know, these are things that I'm very proud of. This is a very exciting time for our community. Um, I know we don't see it now, but us as trustees, we have to think 10 years down the road. We have to think five, 10, 20 years down the road. We have to set this community up for our children. We have to make sure that this is a safe, healthy, um, vibrant place for kids to grow up, to go to school um, and, and to, to engage in, in all the different things we have here in the community. So um, I'm very proud of this board. I'm very proud of this budget and um, and I'm excited to see uh, the next chapter here in Shorewood.
Thank you, trustee Yersink. Trustee Kudo?
Oh, you're on last?
Yeah.
Okay. The situation stinks, really. Um, my parents still live here, you know, they're fixed income, the Von Morris have since I was a kid. Um, my wife and I are raising our daughters here. You know, this is a, a situation where we all live in Shorewood. We all live in older homes for the most part, right? And what Shorewood is right now is a house that the electrical doesn't work, not up to code, uh, it needs to be fixed. The garage, which is our DPW yard, is falling apart. You know, and there's, just isn't enough money to go around, right? Um, I was very happy to see Senator Drake, Senator. I was very happy to see Senator Drake, Senator electric, no Senator Drake here earlier. You know, a lot of this frankly is a, is a failure of the state legislature to address the problems that are happening across this entire state. You know, when you look at Madison and, and the four point six billion dollar surplus that they're sitting on, while at the same time hamstringing every single community in this state. So whether it's us having to raise taxes or raise the levy by six point seven percent, or every school district having to go to referendum again and again and again, while the state is sitting on this mountain of money that is our money, that we would like to put into our streets, that we would like to put into streetlights and taking care of these things. So we didn't have to go and double charge everyone for all of these things. You know, I'm sure that's a message Senator Drake will take back to leadership, uh, you know, in Madison. But this is, this is no fun, you know? I, I pay the same taxes everyone else here does. I'm not happy with the six point seven percent. I certainly wasn't a two percent or an eight percent. So maybe this is a somewhere in the middle, but, you know, to sort of go off of what other folks said. Streetlights are, it's a non-negotiable for me. Like my, my young daughters are walking in this village. We walk our dogs in this village. We have certain things that need to work and they need to work all the time. Because of poor decision-making in the early seventies with regards to the installation of these streetlights, we're now stuck paying this bill, right? I don't want to pay it. I know you don't want to pay it. It has to get paid. But, but really frustrates me the most frankly is the inability of the state of Wisconsin to give us the tools necessary to take care of ourselves. We're not asking for handouts. We're not asking for special privileges. We're asking to chart our own course, to, to be, you know, uh, the villages and the cities that we need to be. And so, you know, when you look at shared revenue, when you look at levy limits, when you look at all these constraints that have been put on us. As you saw before, you know, I think we've averaged one point three percent tax levy increase for the past ten years. At some point that comes due. And unfortunately, from a taxpaying and political and whatever perspective, most of it's due now. It's just not, we're not in a position to keep kicking it down the road because we're going to start having major failures in this village, like you saw frankly in Whitefish Bay, where, you know, in the park in Whitefish Bay, they have a massive sinkhole, massive, they're still working on that, right? Those are the types of things where we're trying to spend five dollars to save five hundred dollars. And so I don't frankly know where I'm going to be on this budget yet. I'm, I, you know, I don't love the total amount. I don't, with all due respect to trustee McGovern, I don't agree with putting as many people in this community as humanly possible. We are already the most dense community in the state of Wisconsin. If I wanted to live in a more dense community, I would live south of here, or I would live in a high rise in the third ward or somewhere else or downtown. I enjoy what Shorewood looks like. I enjoy how Shorewood feels. But with that comes higher taxes, higher fees. It's just the cost of doing business in a smaller community that has exceptional services. So I don't know. I mean, I'm still kind of going back and forth. Again, I don't like the number. The six point seven seven is, it's a really tough pill to swallow. But the flip side is if we don't take care of what we need to take care of, are we doing any better for this village and for the future of this village? And the folks who frankly had these opportunities before us and didn't take them. So, uh, you know, I apologize. It's just a bad situation. And unfortunately for us, we're the ones sitting up here, uh, when the bills came due. So, um, thank you though. I mean, the, the process has been wonderful. Engagement from the community has been wonderful. The emails, I've read every single one of them. Even though with my work schedule this past couple of months, I haven't been able to respond to all of them. I have read all of them. I appreciate the engagement. It's, you know, it's just the situation we find ourselves in. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kudo.
Yeah, I'd like to start by echoing the other trustees and thanking all the residents who showed up, not only tonight, but throughout this very lengthy and not infrequently painful process to get to this budget. So I moved here in two thousand and six, which makes me blow in compared to a lot of folks, I guess. But I live in southeast, which meant in two thousand and ten, I had the privilege of having not one, but two sewer backups during the rain period. So I was probably even more excited than trustee Ursink was when the construction on Downer was complete. Not only because I meant my house would stop shaking, but also because, you know, I knew the future generations that moved there would have, wouldn't have to deal with the, uh, you know, very expensive cleanup and related issues that I had too. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, has been said, I mean, the bill for a lot of things has come due. We went into this, I don't think, there are elements of this budget we just could not have predicted two years ago. The, uh, the mandate on lead pipes was a game changer, is just has, you know, knockoff effects throughout our water infrastructure, which we have to do. There's no real alternative with the facts that we have now. I mean, we can't predict the future. So if there are, you know, there are, you know, changes to the mandate, maybe that gives us more flexibility, maybe not. If, um, you know, the laws change regarding deductibility and, uh, you know, the more heavily taxed states have their voice heard, then, you know, maybe we have more flexibility. But we have to operate in the landscape where we know now, you know, hope is not a plan, as they say. And this is where we netted out. You know, I don't like, um, you know, the regressivity of some of the tools that we have, but that's the nature of the tools we have. I mean, even, uh, you know, the property tax levy is to, is not progressive to an extent. It's, uh, to next, you know, it's, it's still a technically regressive approach. So, um, we just don't have progressive tools to address this tat, this, um, the situation that we find ourselves in. But, you know, I heard, um, you know, you know, loud and clear, I mean, we do have to look at costs. We do have to look at, um, you know, ways that we can address, uh, this moving forward. We can look at, but, you know, reducing costs is going to lead to a reduction in services. That needs to be a part of a broader conversation. There's not a lot of fat in, or any fat in this village's budget. It's been worried to the bone over the years. So changes to the cost structure will have impacts to the services and that needs to be a broader conversation, which is why we do not, well, one of the reasons I was, you know, comfortable not rushing into that right now, uh, for this budget cycle. I think as a village, um, as a village board, I am looking forward to working more closely with staff just to keep the conversation around the budget and the levy. It was more of a year round feature as opposed to something that we, you know, tend to focus on real keenly come late summer, um, because I think that'll encourage a better conversation about solutions and things that we can do to, you know, address some of the concerns that have been raised by the village and, and its residents. Yeah, it's, it's a hard budget. It's a hard reality, but I'm confident that we can move through it. I'm confident we can, uh, continue to find it and look for ways to address the situation and, um, yeah, looking forward to moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arndtver.
Uh, I don't have a whole lot to add. Everybody has, has hit the, hit the high notes, as it were. I think, uh, what I shared a few weeks ago when, um, in the committee, the whole, or when we were talking about the budget. You know, from my viewpoint, we have two major roles as a village board. And one is to steward, um, the resources that we have and that we receive. And we do that really carefully. And so in, in my mind, there's no doubt in my mind that, that that is, um, that we are doing the best job that we can in that role. And while it does, it seems counterintuitive to say that a tax levy increase and, you know, moving to a fee structure, et cetera, et cetera, is a good stewardship of resources. It's not good stewardship to let things deteriorate and, and to not operate for the people that live here. The other thing that we do is we oversee operations of services and the policies that drive that. And those are the way that we're investing in those. Um, and what we've heard from residents is that they like the services that they receive. They like how they receive them. And so in my mind, it is also good stewardship to offer high quality services to people that want high quality services. It also is a reality that a hundred year old village, as everyone has said, takes a lot more care than, um, a younger municipality. At the same time, we are lucky that we have levy capacity. The city of Madison wants to operating referendum, along with other municipalities across the state. So we still do have levy capacity. And so to be able to use that, um, and also to be able to find ways to make it possible for our hundred year old vision, village to be set up for another hundred years, um, is actually a gift. The reality is we don't set prices of how much any of this costs. And so for that, there is no, I've never found a way to make very expensive things very affordable at the same time. And similar, sometimes the analogy of, you know, I have to make decisions in my own budget. So we have to make decisions in our, in our, um, village budget. I can't make, we can choose whether we re, we replace our roof. But to trustee Kudo's point, when something goes in the village, we have to fix it. It's not something that each one of us is making a decision about. If we decide not to fix something, we decide that for the whole village. And everybody either succeeds or everybody suffers because of it. And at the same time, we still have a lot of blessings and a lot of resources that a lot of municipalities don't have. It doesn't mean that people should feel comfortable with this. It doesn't mean that this is, uh, makes it affordable for everyone to pay. It doesn't mean that people are not going to be making choices and thinking down the road about their lifestyles and what they can afford and what they can't. I'm a, I've owned two homes and now I rent because my lifestyle changed. But I'm really grateful that I can still live in Shorewood and I love my rental community and my neighbors. And there's a lot of really great housing. So there are a lot of ways to be in Shorewood. And again, we have to support, we have to make decisions about all of those, um, different ways of being in Shorewood. And as far as we are advocating, um, at the state level and with partners, more than we ever have historically. Rebecca and I have met with more potential partners advocating, asking for alternative funding paths, looking at ways of combining services or partnering, and we will continue to do that. And we've already experienced some savings in, in that capacity. I hope there will be more down the road. But I just want you to know that historically we've never, um, done it at this level before. So I'm very hopeful about that. As for streetlights. Early on, I said, safety vests and glow sticks are a lot cheaper than the streetlight system, but I didn't win on that one. So we won't be purchasing safety vests for everyone in the village. I do support replacing the entire streetlight system. Unfortunately, there is no alternative. You either replace the whole thing or it's safety vest and, and glow sticks, um, for everyone. So with that, um, I don't think I have anything else to, to add. I thought, I wasn't going to add anything, but I did speak quite a bit. Um, I will also say that I, I think we received, um, a request that had pertains to the village board budget, um, in terms of bike head safety initiatives. I just wanted to update that those initiatives really are legal, to move forward with those initiatives in two thousand and twenty five or whenever they're able to move forward, um, they would come out of a legal fee line item that we already have budgeted and signage. So for that reason, it's a win-win in my book to fund it in that capacity and not have to change anything in the village board, um, budget at this time. So just wanted to address that. So with that, um, I would, we are at that time. Is there anyone who wants to, who is anticipating making a motion to either defer or to change the, um, proposed motion in the, in the packet?
I would move to defer so that we can, um, substitute some of the parking surplus fund for the six point seven seven levy.
Is that necessary? Do we have to calculate?
I guess I'm not sure. Because substantively you'd be passing the same expenditure, so we should be able to tweak that. But I'm not sure if you'd need a vote for everyone to agree. So, no.
We would need how much? A hundred and six? From, and we could take it from?
A hundred and seven thousand.
Hundred and seven thousand would reduce from the parking fund to the general fund?
It would be a transfer from the parking fund to the general fund of a hundred and seven thousand.
And that would be a one time expenditure, transfer, and that would bring it down to a six percent levy?
Yes.
And so for procedurally, if, um, should, should a trustee desire to see that as the outcome? They would simply make a motion to adopt the village budget with the exception, with the amendment of a one time transfer of parking utility funds in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand dollars to the general fund, which would automatically reduce it to a six percent.
I believe that sounds appropriate.
So we wouldn't need to defer. Um, I just want to, I'm not saying either way, I'll let the board, um, decide on that. But that would be, um, a remedy for.
Okay. Can I make a motion to transfer those funds? Is it like, is now the right time for that?
Yes, you could make a motion. And what we would do is we would make a motion, see if there's a second, we would have discussion on it. We would, um, then see if it passes. If it didn't pass, we go to another motion.
Yeah. So, you know, for the reasons I mentioned earlier, there's about four hundred, I think it's four fifty, four seventy five in there. It's, it's a surplus. We have less need for it now that we allow more on-street parking. So, um, just in the interest of bringing that levy increase back down to six rather than six point seven seven, I would move to transfer a hundred and seven thousand out of the parking utility into the general fund in the next year's budget.
Second.
All right, we have a, uh, motion by trustee McGovern, seconded by trustee Ursink. I will open it for discussion at this time.
I, I just have a quick question and this might be for you, attorney Barrett. Should the motion be to approve the budget with that as an amendment? Or is doing it as a separate motion and then approving the budget, is that okay? Just because of what's agenda?
No, I, um, it's part and parcel of the budget. I think it's an appropriate motion at this time and it could be done either way. This particular motion was to, if I understand it, to pass the budget with the caveat of moving that, um, surplus from the parking fund to the general fund. I think it's, what you said was four hundred and seventy five thousand.
Yeah. So the transfer would be a hundred and seven thousand. I think there's four.
It's, it's right. It's a hundred and seven out of the, out of the, out of the surplus, which is the four seventy five.
Right, right. Yeah.
So it's not the full four seventy five. It was a hundred and seven.
Right.
And then just to clarify then, is your intention then to pass the, the entire rest of the budget with this motion?
If we, if we can get that, then I'll, I would vote for the whole budget. So it's, maybe it's easier just from a agenda perspective to have, have them be separate. But e, either way, I'll defer to attorney bear, whatevers.
It's up to you. I mean, if, if, because I think the way I wrote it down is to pass the budget with that caveat, or with that change, basically. So if you want to withdraw it, um, if there's consent, mutual consent of everybody, you could, you could start over if you wanted to just do it separately. If you want to consider it separately, that's fine too.
I think it's probably easier just to do this separately. You know, so I move to.
Is there unanimous consent to withdraw the motion? Does anybody have any problem with that?
I think, don't they need to?
Cause there was a second, right?
Okay. So I, I move to withdraw the motion that I just said for passing the whole budget with a hundred and seven thousand dollar change. And so.
I second his, I agree.
Okay.
I'm bored.
Can I just ask you a question of the finance?
Can I just ask you a question of the finance? Are we, are we sure on the hundred and seven thousand dollars? I mean, we sort of, I feel like we kind of just did this, I mean, not, I guess maybe to question the math in the committee, in the committee of the whole room right now, but like, are we, there's no memo on this that I remember seeing. Are we sure that these numbers are correct and that we're about to take care of this? Or are we pretty sure, like, what's a, does there a percentage on this?
Could we make the motion more generic and say to come to a six percent property tax increase? Transfer the amount heated out of the property tax fund up to, and you could say up to a hundred and fifty thousand so that if it was off by a couple of dollars?
Yes, so-
You know what I mean?
That would make sense.
I mean, I, I thank you very much. I'm not comfortable with this. So I want, I want actual numbers. I want a memo that outlines what this does, what ramifications are, how much we're taking from the parking surplus. And that, you know, I know we just threw this on both of you. And I, you know, I'm a no if we're just gonna do this live in the room. I'd rather, I'd rather have this be a little bit more formal.
If, if I can also just chime in too, we did talk about that bucket of money already and we talked about it in the budget and finance committee. And in, in a bit more detail. Now, this was a while ago, you know, before we got to this point. You know, but at that time, there wasn't, at least from the committee side of it, you know, interest in using that money. So I'm, I'm very hesitant to do that at this point. I, I think that parking utility fund doesn't hurt us where it is. And I think that the, given just the, the overall size of, of this budget and what we have going on and how hard we worked on it, I, I really don't want to change it unless absolutely necessary. So, you know, I, I just want to be clear, we did talk about that, that fund already.
Yeah, and I, the reason I brought it up is because, you know, we'd been talking six percent levy for a long time. That's changed to six point seven seven. So I'm just trying to find ways to stay at six. Maybe, maybe that changes the calculus among some of the board members to use some of that parking surplus fund. And then also, I was just reviewing all the public comments again today and there was just a really strong, consistent theme of like, I want you guys to find some ways to cut expenses. You know, even though we've done a lot of surveys, people want to maintain services, people don't want to cut the police or DPW in general, but people do want us to, I think, try to find some alternatives to just entirely doing it with new levy and fees.
Yeah, but question for staff, if we reduce it to six percent as outlined, how does that impact the one seventy-five more than the previous levy? What does that take it down to?
For a three hundred and forty thousand dollar home, instead of paying one seventy-five, we'd have to calculate that. But it's a point seven seven percent, so it's likely not going to make too big of an impact for each person. Once we do the levy, all the numbers will be more exact. And that's why I'm hesitant in saying it's exactly a hundred and seven dollars. But if you're uncomfortable with a specific motion, you could, like I said, do it up to what it, what it takes to be at a six percent property tax number.
Okay.
And so you just have to word the motion that way so that you can go up to a certain amount.
Yeah. So when everyone's done discussing, I'll reword the motion.
Yeah, I, I guess my, I've got a, what's the word? Concern isn't the right word, sentiment, there it is, similar to, somewhere the other trustee, I just, I mean, this is a finite resource. Our budgets aren't going to be any easier in the coming years. So I would, my preference would be to, you know, retain the gunpowder we can. And it doesn't sound like we're going to have a huge benefit if we take it down to a clean six percent. I'm very, very sympathetic. From a transparency and communication standpoint, that if we're going to put a number out there, that's what the number should be. I, I'm not sure the juice is, you know, worth the squeeze in this, this respect though. Thank you.
I would say I can really see it both ways. I appreciate the sentiment of, of wanting to ease it. I also was on the board that managed to eke out, you know, less than one percent. And it was with a lot of one-time funds, which then created this, this big structural deficit this year that required a course correct. So the other thing that I can say after ten years of this is that there is always a change because there are always last minute calculations that come in. When we leave the committee, the whole, or the budget and the last budget meeting for the year, saying, the reason why we don't adopt and take action that night is because we're giving direction on the composition of the budget, knowing that the ultimate numbers will be slight, it'll be basically the same, but slightly, there, there can be fluctuation. Sometimes you can get something that comes in last minute and it's a little less, not this year. So I can also, I can just say that maybe what we really need to do in the future is to just be really clear with the public that we're sharing as much as you, we can along the way with the understanding that there is no way to know the exact numbers until the public hearing. And we do our best to be within one percent. Question, as to trustee Kudo's point, if we defer, would we actually have a memo that outlines all of that? Because what I'm hearing is that until you set the levy and recalculate everything, it's hard to generate those numbers. So would we, would we, if we deferred? But if the motion doesn't pass, why would we come back in two weeks? Okay, so I'm going to put it on your, you all that, you gotta make a motion and see if it passes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the parking utility to the general fund with the goal of reducing the tax levy increase to six rather than six point seven seven percent.
Would not succeed.
I said up to- Yeah.
Okay, repeat the motion, please.
I move to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the parking utility fund into the general fund for the 2025 budget with the goal of reducing the proposed tax levy increase from six point seven seven to six point oh percent.
Would that be up to?
Up to a hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Okay, motion by trustee McGovern, is there a second? Okay, motion fails for lack of second. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
Go ahead. I move to approve resolution 2024 dash sixteen, a resolution adopting the 2025 budget and authorizing the 2024 general property tax levy against all taxable property in the village of Shorewood.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Lynn. This will be a roll call vote. Oh, is there a discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it just feels like there's some last minute movement here, which could be fantastic. You know, I'm, I'm not very comfortable with, you know, this last minute motion, potential dollar amounts, is it one oh seven, is it up to one fifty? Like, that's not a small window between those two numbers. Certainly as a percentage of the entire budget it is, but that's, I would prefer to defer. But, you know, we're already passed.
Didn't we just vote that down though?
We did, that failed.
Not to defer.
No, the, the motion on the floor right now is to adopt the budget.
Right.
So you're saying that-
I would, I'm not motioning to defer. I would prefer if we had, if we were to defer, it doesn't look like it's going that way, so I'll be voting no.
Got it. I think I'm likely to support this. I really appreciate the efforts to find another, to land someplace else for the variety of reasons. I think the reality is if we do not, with the, if we don't pass this budget for lack of support for the tax levy that is needed or in future, the, the charges, then we are saying that we're going to cut services without a plan to do that. Because there is, this is a status quo budget with the exception of bringing five positions up to, they were below midpoint in their, in their professions. So it really isn't, we're not adding anything. It is a, a status quo operational budget. And so for that purpose, if this budget doesn't pass, we are essentially committing to, to cutting services. And I don't support that without, I'm willing to look at service levels in 2025, but nobody does layoffs overnight. They have a plan, they might announce it overnight, but you work for Miller, like, don't you guys plan in months in advance to lay people off?
No comment. Would you like to be on the record on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, so that's why I'll be supporting this, this evening. Any further discussion?
It, it would be my preference to just defer two weeks and vote for almost this exact budget, but just with that change in the, you know, using those parking funds rather than increasing the levy to six point seven seven. So without that, I'll, I'll be voting no.
I, I'm just a little bit concerned about deferring. I mean, you know, we have been working on this for months. We've been putting this information out there for months. And I'm concerned that once it came time to actually vote for it, we're looking at potentially deferring it to make changes to the budget in a two-week timeframe as opposed to the couple-month timeframe that we've been working on this. You know, like I said, I mean, we did discuss using that fund. That's not something that we want to go away. And given the long history of deferring on projects and the long history of using special funds like that, the plug holes in the budget, we're at the position that we're in today. I'm not trying to recreate that and I'm not trying to throw something into the budget. Even if it's a, you know, seemingly relatively reasonable idea on the surface. You know, in a, in a short two-week timeframe, when we've had months to, to prepare for this and we, and we did, we did look at all those things. We did look at cutting services. We did look at using any extra dollars that are available. And we are using them and I think we're using them in a way that's smart and reasonable and, you know, keeps Shorewood a wonderful community to live in. So I'm, I would like to support this budget that we've been working on as is.
I would agree with the trustee. Yeah, I mean, it's been a long road to get here. There's no Plan B budget that I've seen put out there with, apart from the minor adjustment that we might have that, you know, as we heard, would not have a material impact on, you know, what residents would be paying. So I'm, I'm comfortable with proceeding with this budget as is. You know, it's, it's a status quo budget on a certain level as described, but you know, it's, we're doing some extraordinary things within this, specifically with the streetlights. You know, manager Y Walz made the point over and over that, you know, she's never seen a community do a total overhaul of its, you know, streetlight infrastructure before. It's for very clear reasons, it's really expensive. And so if we're going to do something that that's extra, you know, that's an extraordinary step to take, it's a necessary step to take. I'm not seeing a, you know, strongly mobilized anti-streetlight crew out there. And unfortunately, that does, replacing it costs money. And we need to come up with an extraordinary approach to address that. That's not going to, you know, cripple our, the village's financial flexibility moving forward. So I will be voting in support of this budget.
All right, so at this point, I'd like to call the vote and this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Nay.
Trustee Kudo?
Nay.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Motion carries four two. All right, moving on to, thank you, everyone. Moving on to 10B, consider resolution 2024 dash seventeen to carry forward allowable prior year unused levy capacity. This is a routine when we have the ability to do that.
So I move to approve resolution 2024 dash seventeen to carry forward allowable prior year unused levy capacity.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer, any discussion? Oh, we really cleared out the room. Good night, Dan.
We got surprises at the end.
Yeah, right. Oh, that's, is there anyone who would like to be heard on this specific resolution around carry or questions? All right, hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item 10C, consider resolution 2024 dash eleven, I mean eighteen, delinquent municipal charges.
I move to approve resolution 2024 dash eighteen, delinquent municipal charges.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer, any discussion? Hearing none, this will also be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item 10D, consider resolution 2024 dash nineteen, special assessments for private laterals. This, do I need to remind everyone what this is? This pertains to the private lateral, laterals that will be replaced as part of the 2025 construction year?
I move to approve resolution 2024 nineteen, special assessments for private laterals.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee McGovern, any discussion? Hearing none, this will also be a roll call vote. President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item 10E, consider resolution 2024 dash twenty, bid, operating plan and special assessments.
I move to resolution 2024 twenty, bid, operating plan and special assessments.
Motion by trustee Arndorfer, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item 10F, consider ordinance thirty sixty-nine, repealing and replacing subsection five hundred dash twenty-five, section one I three, one three, concerning regulation of residential parking permits. This comes to us from the committee of the whole and it was recommended for adoption at our previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Yeah, there's two, the motion should be read as one, correct? It's A and B.
It's a resolution and ordinance.
Yeah, it's both, right? And I can read it as one is, is all I'm asking for clarification, page one nineteen.
Oh, right, it's agendas to separate.
No, it's agendaed as one, but the motion has an A and a B. And I'm just curious, can I read them as one or?
Everybody's gonna vote on them the same way. But you might get some that want to vote yes on one and no.
Okay, let's just do it separately.
Do it separately, okay. I move to approve ordinance thirty sixty-nine, repealing and replacing subsection five hundred dash twenty-five I three, concerning regulation of residential parking permits.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote also. Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer? Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending the fee for residential congested commuter area parking permits.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? I will just say, I'm really glad that we're taking this step. Should have said it last time. Hearing no further discussion, this will be a roll call vote also. Trustee McGovern.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
President McCaig.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. We have one item left in new business, ten eight, additional information on streetlight special charge. There's no action required.
There's a B, sorry, there's a.
Oh.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two to amend the fee for residential daytime parking permit district.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion?
You can do the ordinance.
This will be a roll call vote. Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
President McCaig.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee McGovern.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Got one more, ordinance thirty-seven.
Okay, ten G, consider ordinance thirty seventy, special daytime parking permit and fees.
I move to approve ordinance thirty seventy, repealing and replacing subsection five hundred dash twenty-five I three concerning regulation of residential parking permits.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Ursink, all those, I mean, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
President McCaig.
Aye.
Trustee McGovern.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Now we can move to ten H, additional information on the streetlight special charge. A memo has been prepared for you from attorney bear. Thank you.
Thanks.
To bring everybody up to date on the different considerations related to this matter. There is no action required this evening. The purposes for providing the information and providing an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions as this item will come to us for future action at a future meeting. Are there any questions for attorney bear at this time? All right, hearing none, thank you very much for your service on, on preparation on that attorney bear. Moving on to reported village officials, the ICC meeting from November eleventh, twenty twenty-four is linked in the packet. I do not believe that I have any other reports at this time, reports of village trustees.
I can update on the, the request. Representative Madison asked us if we had any requests to get in the budget, and we got that application in on time with the help of staff and president McCaig, and we're going to be also working more with the ICC on the issue of lead laterals and trying to get some funding out of the state for water mains and lead laterals that really communities all across the state are dealing with that. So hopefully we get some of that surplus could come down to Shorewood. We have a better legislature coming up, a little bit more balanced than before, so hopefully we will get some help out of Madison, the city of Madison, not Darren Madison, or actually both.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
I have to, I just have to turn it off. Wait, let me turn it.
And trustee McGovern has offered to volunteer to prepare a resolution to introduce at the ICC at the December meeting, asking for the support of the body to advocate for this issue at the state level. And the League of Wisconsin municipalities has already had public hearings on the matter.
And I volunteer to drive early next year to go up to Madison's lobby, so.
Excellent, all right.
Make a road trip out of it.
Road trip, thank you. All right, any other trustee reports?
Library update. I see Haley's here, but wanted to say congratulations to library for hiring Haley's deputy, who I was able to meet last week. Last week? It's all one week now. My whole life is just one week. But he looks to be a fantastic addition to the library, is very excited, was very communicative with us. So hopefully everything goes as well as we expected to, and the library continues to flourish. So thank you for, for Chris and, and, and everyone else for participating and Haley and getting that done. It's a huge step in moving library forward.
Thank you. And congratulations. Village manager.
Just a friendly reminder that I am looking for trustees who would like to attend the candidate forum on December second from six to six thirty. We do this every year in conjunction with the school district. Really what it is, is just an informal opportunity for people who may be interested in running for office to come and speak to current board members about what that experience is like. So if there's someone who'd be willing to come or more,
Yeah.
you're all welcome. We do notice it as a possible quorum. There's no action of any type that goes on at these, but it's just always nice to have some representation from the board, so. So that will be happening, that's prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting. And then wanted to also give the board a reminder that the deadline for training for both elected and volunteer officials, the deadline for that is on November twenty-sixth. This, we've extended the deadline and all of the trainings are available online for you to complete. On the twenty-sixth, we'll be pulling down on that log. Right now, we're only at a thirty percent completion rate for our list of volunteers. So that list will actually end up going to JP and L to take a look at. So if you have any questions about how to access the training or misplaced your password, something of that nature, just reach out, we're happy to help. And get that process complete.
I learned today that we all have two no before accounts.
Correct.
I didn't know that, because one said I was done and the other one says I haven't started, so.
The problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
The acting in these is phenomenal.
Yeah, I wanna, can I just, as long, for those that are, that are in communication with the league, if they could update it.
You know, I have asked this, yeah, right?
I thought I was gonna put it in my VHS to watch it. It was, those are hours that, you know, they were hour, it was a lot, yeah. Can we just have a conversation with them about making it a little bit more streamlined and, and but the acting was phenomenal.
That's a nice explanation.
Yeah. Thank you for the love of it.
And thank you to Haley for demanding that I do it, because otherwise I would have continued to put it off, but she threatened us, so.
Thank you. Good leadership. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm really, I'm hung up on that second account, the no before, now I gotta really work on that, okay. There are no future items of consideration. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
I guess everybody motions to adjourn and everybody seconded the adjourn, and are there any objections? We stand adjourned at nine oh eight. Thank you, everyone.
Turn it off.